Other items they care more about, so that's what we want to find out.
Going back to the scoring, and I appreciate Christina's question on this, because it was one that I had as well. Is there a breakdown, is there a matrix breakdown on those scores by department, by job classification?
I don't, it wasn't. It was by each question.
Okay, so we did not break it down by city department or?
No.
Okay.
We gave them an opportunity to anonymously complete the survey?
Oh, certainly.
And quite honestly, when you do that, especially in the smaller departments, employees get very worried that it's not going to be an anonymous survey.
That's fine.
So, you know, sometimes, if you have a lot of big departments, that's usually okay. But when you get small departments like we have, it's probably not a good idea.
That's fine, that's fine. I was just asking a question.
Yeah, one last question, and this is more for you, but more globally as well. One of the things that we had talked about previously is being able to look at and evaluate exit interviews. And I know I've seen one recently, and actually it kind of mirrors, the feedback kind of mirrors exactly what you have lined out here, so not surprising. But I would ask that you, in your current position, if you've looked through those exit interviews that we've had within the past year and a half, and if there's anything additional that stands out as a result that's not covered in here, that we make sure that that gets incorporated as well.
I have not done that yet, but I can.
Anyone else have anything for Alan?
Okay. Thanks for the presentation.
Anything else from any of the other directors? Jeff?
No.
Brian?
Yeah, just briefly. We're going to have a follow-up meeting for the Gardner Road, I-35 interchange sub-area on May 27th at Nike School. We're looking to schedule the initial meeting for the property owners around 175th and I-35 for early in June. Did want to let you know that staff has been working with the city of Olathe on options for sanitary sewer for a portion of the southeast corner of the I-35, 175th Street and Interchange. In addition, city staff has prepared several preliminary layouts for how to put the sewer in over there, along with some probable costs. And I did want to let you know that from a water perspective, you need both water and sanitary. Sanitary is kind of that big driver. Water is fairly close. It's come down to Edge Lane to 175th, but that area is predominantly served by Johnson 7.
The agreements with Olathe are, is that going to be pumping the sewage to the new plant on 159th Street?
Yeah, it's actually going up and over the hill. 175th is kind of a ridgeline road, so everything south, pretty much flows south. Everything north flows towards the city of Olathe. They did have some additional capabilities or capacity within their system. They assumed a certain development within that system, and some of that development has changed, so it's been less of an impact to it, so they have more capacity. And so what we're exploring with them is, can we take some of that additional capacity for the long term?
Fantastic. Great. Cheryl, you have something?
No.
No? Brian? Jeanie, thank you so much for doing the orientation this evening. We really appreciate it. Jean, you got anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Trying to think. Amy, I see out there in the audience, you don't want to say anything? Jeff?
I've got a few things, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Real quick, I know the governing body got emails about some business cards and other things that I checked into, and first of all, I was kind of surprised that we don't have a gardener-first policy for buying things, like the business cards. I think that's something we need to look at. Seems to me that if we're going to keep our money local, it'd be better if we started doing that first.
I agree.
Secondly, on the business cards alone, if you noticed, if you looked at those numbers, we had $30 variance in 500 business cards, because someone was able to say, "Well, I want this or that or the other accessory on there." And to me, I think the city needs to have a standard of, hey, this is what we're going to have for business cards. They're all going to be the same, and send that out for a bid, whatever it is yearly or what like to do with the vet. So I think, yeah. So, and Cheryl, the pay scale information that I asked about, did you?
Did you get, yes.
Is it in my?
It should be, it's in the spec of the tier.
Okay, I know, there's so much I look for. I didn't have a chance to look.
In your, yeah.
That wasn't meant to be punishment.
No, no. Also, I noted, tonight we voted on the, for Oakbrook, it was a contract that I got a copy of. I don't know if any of the other council members have looked at it, but I don't know if the citizens really know. We spend about $90,000 a year on animal recovery. I didn't know if there was ever any kind of a report filled out from the police department on how many animals were actually locking up, because by my math, it's about $250 a day we're spending. I just didn't know what we're actually getting for that. And then the citizens are paying to pick up their animals as well. So I'd kind of like to see something on that. I know we've got a long time before that contract comes up again, but it's definitely something I want to find out about. And finally, I, when I got my, all this stuff, we started talking, I actually, we got an email about the planning commission folks on there. I sent Jeanie an email asking for the applications for those folks who are applied. And for me, if I'm going to, I was asked to, for those in the audience who don't know, we're asked to give a reference or pick out two people that we thought would be good and submit their names. I asked for the applications so I could submit the best qualified person. I found out, we, as a governing body, are not allowed to have that information. So that process currently goes through the mayor, and then the mayor and another council member and Cheryl will go through and look at the people and recommend for people to vote up here, or for us to vote on as a whole. I would like to see, one, that council members, we need to, I think, on the May 4th agenda, we need to have a vote where council members can be allowed to see those applications, an amendment to our current policy. And then, I think, secondly, no less than two city council members should be in the interview process for the people for the planning commission or any commission, because really, that's the accountability of being an elected official. Right now, Cheryl's not an elected official, she doesn't have any, the citizens don't have a way to measure or respond to her because she's not an elected official. Same thing with the people who are already on the commission who go in there, they're not elected, so they're appointed, so again, there's not a method for the citizens to say, "Hey, I don't like the way this is happening, and I think that needs to change." So I have a, I typed this up, basically it's a, it basically says exactly what I said. I have the email that I sent to the mayor the other day requesting that this be put on the agenda today. He said it wasn't available, we weren't able to do that. Because to me, as an elected official, I think it's imperative that we are responsible to the citizens, and we don't pass that buck, I guess, on to other people, and we remain accountable. There's one for you, I think, except for the mayor, I think she already has the confirmation email. So I was just wondering what the governing body thinks about that.
Let me make an inquiry, because I did not, it says here, no less than two council members. It can't be any more than two council members either, because you'd have a violation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act.
Sure.
So what you're saying is two council?
Two council members, right.
So not less than, but just two?
Two council members.
The requirement that two council members and the mayor be involved in this discussion.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, the time, if you look at what time that was set, I was kind of tired.
No, I get it.
I can tell you, and let's see, Christie and Steve have both been part of these discussions in the past, and heck, Lee's been part of the scheduling of some of these events in the past. Trying to, the more people that you try and put into the mix, and shoot, we've put in, you know, planning commission or utility advisory commission members or BZA members into the mix as well, it's starting to take a process that runs pretty smoothly. At this point, and adds one more piece that might make it more cumbersome, actually might make it harder for us to hit the timelines that we've already established, which actually probably take a little bit longer than I would like, but they seem to get done in time, on time, and we don't seem to have a degradation of service on the particular boards.
My thought process is, I'm not asking for any more people, I'm asking for different people. So, I mean, if right now Cheryl, yourself, and one of the people from the planning commission, that's three, I'm just asking that those other two people be council members who are going to vote to have somebody come up here and present themselves to be voted on by the entire council.
Well, I mean, one of the changes we recently made was to add a commission member, and that was at the request of the public. So I would say that we need to keep that.
Okay.
My question is, can we, so I think that each appointment, so we have vacancies for planning commission, we should have a consistency throughout that particular process. I guess my question is more?
Future.
Do we, but do we, even in the future, can we say we have a minimum of one council person, but if two people want to volunteer for that segment, but that, in that way, if you have two people, and let's say it's Steve and Rich, but you can't coordinate schedules in a timeframe, you always, I mean, the minimum has to be?
Being one. I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
Then you don't have, I mean, if you start running schedules issues, you just, one person needs to back out.
I would rather have, again, a more, a broader perspective of the governing body. I understand that that's something that's important. We, part of our due diligence as members of the governing body is to preside over the appointment of boards and commission members, you know, through the process. And we give latitude to the mayor, great latitude to the mayor, he was the one who comes with the final recommendation, but we have a significant amount of input, or should have a significant amount of input in the process. My question is, and this is something I've never really, really understood, and that is, and this is not a personal inquiry or anything like that, but why is the city administrator involved in board and commission meetings? And the biggest reason why I have that question is because, as an individual who has equal weight in the selection process, that individual's not elected, they're not accountable to the people of the community, but we are, and they are supposed to be serving as our advocates and representatives on these boards and commissions to do the work from a policy perspective. Again, these are, you know, policy boards, that we are basically delegating our authority to those boards. And so, from that perspective, what involvement does the city administrator have in that process? And I'm not, I'm talking about an individual, I'm talking about just the role, the role in general.
I mean, from my perspective, it's consistency, and I mean, I can tell you, I've sat in on many interviews, and the city administrator has never swayed my decision one way or another. I mean, it's just, to me, it's a consistent person who?
Well, I have no problem with her being there, it's just the voting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
She doesn't, she doesn't, she doesn't really vote. I mean, we come to a concord, you know, which way we're going, but, you know, the bottom line is, is that she can provide a little bit of expertise if somebody asks a question. And all of us are, we get small stipends, but, you know, we're all basically volunteers. This is the top, you know, appointed official that we have for the city, who understands how each of these boards and commissions works. So yeah, she provides consistency. On top of that, she's really the only one that takes, Steve takes nice notes, so does Christie, but she takes copious notes the whole time. If you ever need to refer back to something that happened in the meeting, Cheryl's probably the one to look to first. But yeah, that's, you know, when you're talking about three people, or four people, she hasn't really been casting, citing votes at all.
I guess, can we just focus on the, do we want to move forward with that, where we can add a second, a possible council member, if they can arrive to, and then also the fact that the governing body should be able to see those applications prior to the people stepping up here in front of us? I mean, and the other stuff, I really don't, it's not, not an issue to me. My issues are the two things that I brought up.
Yeah, I guess the, I'd have a question with, everybody's seen the applications, if they're not being, if they're not part of the process of doing the interviews and being part of the selection team as far as that goes.
Well, here's the thing. Yeah.
And hold on, hold on, hold on, please, let's not start out by interrupting each other. But, you know, this is, an application is a document that you're going to use for interview purposes, and applications are covered under the Kansas Open Meetings, I mean, the Open Records Act, because people that are applying for these positions to take oaths are public officers, and public officers are covered by this. So, Brian, do you want to, can you, can you say more eloquently what I'm trying to get at here?
I'm not quite sure where you're going, but certainly, certainly there are applications, if you distribute them all to the governing, to all members of the governing body, and the governing body takes action based upon, in an open public meeting, based upon that knowledge, the applications become an open public record. The applications certainly could have some confidential information on them, which, you know, most, most applications do, or may, and so you have to be careful in what you push out, whether you redact out that type of personal information or not, you know, and you may be comfortable with having, the public having those applications, but it's just, it's a consideration for you, in exactly what information you do push out.
Well, I did have one concern, and this is something that, you know, was noted, you know, when we were first, when we were first asked to provide feedback on the candidates. And there were, what, six? I think it's, where are the six?
Could it be as many as six?
There were six candidates, and we had to whittle them down to three, I think, for the interview process. So we were asked to make our, to make our recommendations for our top two or three.
For what?
That was, that was done in this last election. So we were, we were sent on an email, we were asked, of these, of these six candidates, which of the top, what was the?
The top two.
Yeah, the top two.
Do you make a recommendation?
Recommendation?
You mean this last email?
Yes.
I don't believe it says that at all. It says, it says, do you have any?
Do you have any suggestions to any?
Do you have any issues? Or do you, or would you like to make a recommendation for someone? That means, if you don't want to make a recommendation at all, you don't have to. If you don't have an issue with anybody at all, you don't have to take issue with any of the applicants.
And?
It's, we're not, we're not, and that's, Rich and I had a conversation about this this afternoon.
Okay.
We're not, we're not requiring people to provide recommendations, but it's, if, Sean Carlisle had applied for the airport board, and you wanted to, and you wanted to give him a recommendation because he's handsome and clever?
Right.
Then, then you could, then you could provide that to the people that were on the selection committee. And, you know, Jerry Kellagh had applied for the same airport board, and you said, "I don't like Jerry, Jerry's crotchety," then that's your issue with me. I mean, we're not looking for everybody to make recommendations for all these. You really, you only make a recommendation if you feel strongly about one of the candidates, and you only take issue if you've got an issue with it.
Are other people allowed to talk during this, or are you just going to do the, all the talking?
Actually, Rich stopped, I started, I'm done now, I'll be glad to cede the floor to you, if that's what you would like.
Well, I'm, yeah.
You don't need to?
That would be awesome.
Yeah. You don't need to be, if I'd like that, just give me a sign.
Well, I just didn't, I didn't like, I wasn't enjoying the lecture, as all. The, I'm, you know, I have a, I have a similar concern. The boards that we're talking about discuss issues of policy, the people that we appoint to those boards are acting on our behalf, and it's all about policy. So I see where Rich is coming from. It's, should be pretty much a decision of the body, who, you know, who makes it as far as the, as far as the vote. So, that's basically all I was going to say.
My issue is, if, and we talked about this earlier, but I'm going to tell the entire council and those out here, if I'm asked to make a recommendation, I'm going to make a recommendation based on, I know the full content of that person. I know Sean is very handsome and witty. That may not be the only qualification, though, for the position that he's applying for. I'd like to make sure, if we're going to get gardener off the bricks and into the game, we need to make sure that we are putting the right people in those positions, and those resumes, it's no different than if I was hiring that person for my company or any other company I've ever worked for, they're, I need that resume, I need to see what their qualifications are, because based on a recommendation of, I know him, he's a great guy, yeah, I guess, but it doesn't help the city go forward if there's somebody who's actually more qualified than Sean, and I just don't know them. That's my whole point in this whole matter.
I actually have the letter written, pulled up here. And the last paragraph before the planning commission applicant list says, "After the board and our commission openings have been advertised for two weeks, the city clerk shall provide the governing body a list of the applicants for the specified opening." This is out of chapter two, section eight, appointments of the governing body rules of procedure. "The council will then be given one week to advise the city clerk of any potential issues with any of the candidates, or to offer a recommendation for a candidate. Please provide feedback by Wednesday, April 22nd." It doesn't say anything about this being, you know, I said, please provide feedback, that's more of a request than a requirement, but I guess that there's a little bit of nebulous language that's involved here with regard to the governing body rules of procedure, if that is exact, if that is indeed what it says in here? Because I don't think that anybody who, you know, like, for example, I don't know a heck of a lot about Bruce Hughes as a, as a, you know, qualified member of the planning commission, okay? But it's saying here, please provide feedback on a recommendation for a candidate, without any information to be able to make that decision that's quantifiable. Now, if we don't want to do that, if we don't want to allow the council to have any recommendations for a candidate before interviews, you know, then that language should be struck, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to provide recommendations that are uninformed. That's basically what it comes down to for me.
I have no problem, I agree, I think seeing the applications, I mean, don't we do that for the airport board? I seem to remember seeing?
It's one of the interviews, yeah.
But I can tell you, I can tell you that oftentimes, and I, because I'm mayor, I do sit in on all these, these interviews, and I see all the applications, and many times, and people that I know, that I know have greater qualifications than what they have detailed on their application, Christie, you've seen some of these, Steve, you've seen some of these, that, these are not great distinguishers of qualifications in some cases. The other thing that I would suggest, and I actually kind of like Steve's idea, maybe it needs to just be, stricken, the language needs to be stripped from the?
But the, but with a caveat, here's the caveat, though, if you strike that language, that means every applicant gets an interview. Every applicant gets an interview.
And just about, you know, we've shortlisted a couple of times, but for, by and large, we interview most, almost all.
Yeah, that would not, that would need to be a requirement, because we don't want to be, you know, weeding out of it, or they get to an interview process.
I guess from my perspective, if we, first of all, I think we've made great strides in this process.
I agree.
So I think that it comes down to, for me, trust. It doesn't matter, I mean, I know many people on paper who may look great, and I may say, oh, they look great, but I'm not in the interview process, and Steve may be in it and say, you know what, they really were the best candidate as far as that goes. So I think it comes down to trust. If we're, in my opinion, if you're going to increase two people, two council members to interview, we either have faith in the decision, or we don't. And because even if I recommend somebody based on what I see on paper, and somebody comes out of the interview and says, "That wasn't the right person," you're just going to end up not voting for, I mean, I just, that's my opinion, and I don't?
It's just in the current, in the current process, a recommendation within the absence of information for that week period before the interview process, doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, you accept, you accept all the applications, they all get interviews, there's no recommendation needed, because the interview board, the mayor, one to two city council members, the chair of the commission, that should be sufficient. Am I off base on that?
So let's write it up and sign it? So it's on the agenda for next, or May 4th?
Well, there's some other governing body rules of procedure changes you want to see too, Mayor, didn't you?
I would think so, but now?
Like term limits?
Oh, well, yeah.
Makes sense, same session.
Would you like to make a motion, and we can vote on that?
Actually, we would just do it, it would be a consensus call. But at the same time, Steve's got a very good point here, there's, you know, some of the boards have longstanding members and not a lot of applicants, and we've got term limit language in the, in the rules of procedure. It's especially bad for airport board, I think, but planning commission, and before long, the people that would serve on the utility commission are probably going to be reaching critical mass, right at a point where we're actually starting to pull some things together. So we've set it at eight years, but I think that we established at the time that we passed that ordinance, that that was something we'd take under advisement. I'm not sure that that language still needs to be in there either. I kind of wonder if maybe we ought to be looking at a more well-rounded meeting about the appointment process. As a, am I wrong? We can certainly get to the things that you're bringing up, Rich, but there's, there seems like there's some other things that we probably ought to work on.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, but my point would be that, in our meeting, you told me that if I wanted to put something on the agenda, that I would email you, and you would put it on the agenda. I emailed you, today you told me if it was too late, but if I would write this up, and then I would present it tonight in council update, that you would, and then we'd get, we would be able to put it on the May 4th agenda. And now you're trying to tell me a different story tonight?
You know?
Which one is it?
Okay.
So on the May 4th agenda, we just want to add another, the potential for two council members in the interview?
And then, yeah, and then the, also the, being able to see the applications.
You're talking about the entire governing body, or just members of the?
I'm willing to work with the council. I mean, really, I think that we can block out enough stuff, it's private, or, you know, information. I don't even need to see the person's name, really, I just want to hear their?
I just want to know what to write up.
Yeah, so.
When, when were the interviews?
Well, I?
They've yet to be scheduled.
Are we suggesting this for this one? I mean?
No, we're in the middle of the process.
All right, so it would be future, all right.
Well, because there's a, there's a sentence in here, we'd like to, all appointment processes?
Oh, I, we can cross that out. I just put that in there. That's my dream, Tom, but?
I can.
No, that's fine. Yeah, we're in the middle of a process right now, we can't, we can't hold the process. We'll go through that one per the existing rules.
Well, and I guess, I don't know that we've got another appointment coming up anytime soon, so do we want to, because we could do it more expediently, but then we just go back and be amending it again later, if we decide to make other changes? Do we want to look at them all at one time, make them all at one time, or would you rather, would you rather amend it, and then amend it, and then amend it?
Yeah, because there's a couple of other things I'd like to see on the governing body rules of procedure myself, some modifications. So it would almost make sense that we have our ideas for changes to the governing body rules of procedure brought to a work session. I love, we go back to work sessions again, but, but it makes sense if we're going to be addressing all these suggestions and changes. We come to a consensus in work session, then staff has a clear idea of what they then staff has a clear idea of what they want to codify into ordinance, and then we can have it voted on at a future meeting. That makes more sense.
Well, and I wonder if maybe we, staff could gather this information from people over a designated time period...
Sure.
So that, you know, so that, once they get it, then they can figure out how, how long it'll take to pull it together for a work session, and then you're ready for approval, because we are heading right into budget season.
Yes, they are.
And, and time gets to be, at a premium.
So we'll do it sooner rather than later, hopefully.
So, so, we've got what Rich is already providing. I would suggest that maybe everyone take a moment, well, take a couple hours, look over the governing body rules of procedure, see if there's anything in there that you would like to change, forward that information onto the city attr, uh, city administrator, and then, how long does everyone think it would take them to put something like that together?
Whatever.
Week, two weeks.
A week?
Sure.
I'll find more.
Yeah.
You guys just got here.
Yeah, we're trying to make it right first.
If the public has changes, whom we address and email to, to, as a member of the, the public, if we have something we'd like to...
Debbie, you can send me anything, and I'll submit it for you on your behalf.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if you go to council or workshop. Okay, thank you.
That's, or you can send it to all the members of the governing body. We're always glad to hear from any of you.
Sure.
So, anybody else have anything for council updates?
Right, uh, the pay and comp study, are we, can we max that at the next meeting?
Yes. The workshop that we're talking, is there, can I ask you now, is everybody available to come at six o'clock on the 4th?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yes. Six o'clock work session, and then we'll have it on the May 4 agenda. So then we don't need to clerk the poll.
Christine, does yours?
Yeah, actually, I have two things. First, to, Cheryl, I know you're working with Deanna Gatt on trying to get agendas published earlier, more interactive, and putting things out there weeks, maybe even months in advance if we know them. Can you give an update on where we are with that?
Yes, we have a, we actually put together the items that we know that are coming up, preliminary, and about when we think they're coming up. So we're reviewing that, and what we'll do is, we're looking to just kind of publish kind of upcoming agenda items, what that item is, and about what month we see it coming to the governing body.
And then when will presentations, so, so my, my hope is that, I'll, I'll use the fire district, for example, we, the fire district will be coming up, I assume, on May 4, roughly. If we have a presentation for them, I, I would like us to publish that as soon as we have it, rather than out on the website. I mean, just...
Sure.
Update the link with that information, knowing full well that not everything may be available, you know, weeks in the bees, and that there may be changes or updates that occur throughout that timeframe. But just make it more interactive, and you get things out there, I guess, as soon as possible.
Yeah, sure. If they have a presentation that they make available to us, and it's, their presentation is ready to go, it's okay to distribute it. What we would do is, it won't have, like, a staff review or a CAF, it'll be, here's what we received from the fire district, so here it is.
Great.
I think that's what I'm hearing you asking for.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
And then my, oh, sorry.
I, I agree with you. The more information, the sooner, the better.
Sure.
Yeah. And then, my last thing is, I mean, we've, we've talked about a lot of things with work sessions, and I know when I was first on council, we kind of had a standing work session the second Monday of a month. I personally would be willing, I, I love starting early, I mean, on Mondays. I love just having two Mondays. However, if over the next couple of months, especially with some of this administrative stuff, if, if that, if we have consensus to do something like that, I, I think that we should...
I'm all for it. I'm all for that.
Sure. Well, well, we have some items that are scheduled, and what we'll start to do is, we have several meetings that we were really just waiting until tonight, so that we could poll the new governing body for those items and for dates. So we will be polling you, we'll schedule them if we don't have items, but we will actually poll you for some items that we know are coming forward.
Even outside of normal council?
Yes, because some of those items are things that, like, I don't see us getting, kind of the retreat that we're talking about, done within, like, an hour or so. Some of those things are things that we need a larger block of time.
Okay.
And so, there's some economic development components, one in particular, that we need to talk about in more of a retreat format, that we're gonna be asking you probably for about a three to four hour block on. So that's gonna be a different timeframe.
I had, I had something. Just a, I was just wondering, we talked about employee turnover. Is there a way that we could get, like, a regular, like, maybe a monthly report of employee numbers, employment numbers, just strictly the numbers?
In terms of...
In terms of who's left, who's, who's hired on, how many people, the city employees?
So new hires, and as we have positions that are open? Yes.
Same people that leave?
Yes.
Steve?
Well, I, I did have one thing, and I, I, I want to acknowledge and thank the contribution of our previous council members, Deputy Roberts, Heath Freeman. They, Heath in particular, came on board in a very tumultuous time for the city, and helped to shepherd us through some, some significant conflict, and, and I want to thank him personally for, for the record, for, for all of his service to the city. I know how civic-minded he is, I know he's running for planning commission, I'm glad he's staying involved. Same with Tori. Tori, I don't know if anybody in this, in this room knows of anybody who's, who loves the city more than Tori does. And it shows from what she's done in the past, and also for her contributions to the city council. And I just wanted to acknowledge that for the record, and thank them both for their service. It's been greatly appreciated, and, and they're, they're good people, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad that they were able to contribute to the city, and we did, so...
Last thing. I was glad that everybody was able to come early this, this evening for photographs. Forward, see them, those up on the website shortly, and for the new council orientation. I would stress again, this'll probably be the third or fourth time you've heard it from me, but the League of Kansas Municipalities Governing Body Institute's coming up, May 15th and 16th. Steve and I were at the one in, in October in Wichita, which was fantastic. There's a new executive director, and a new deputy director, Cindy Green, who used to be with Jerry Moran's office, and they're doing some really good things there. And when I was a freshman councilman, especially back in 2011, I learned a lot. That first governing body institute training that I went to in Topeka, it was, it was fantastic, and I've, I've been to several events, I've come away with good ideas from all of them. I can't, for those of you that are able to attend, by all means, and, and if we could get everybody to go, it'd be a great time for us all to attend, so... That's all I've got. Unless somebody else has something else, I would entertain a motion.
Someone else?
A second.
Can I, can I just get clarity on something? I heard a request from one of the council members about buying here, which is a local preference ordinance. Is staff working, been here, kind of, direction on that? Is that something you'd want staff to be working on a local preference ordinance?
Well, as long as there's, as long as there's outs for, you know, cost effectiveness.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The way they're, yes, the way they're typically written, yes, there is. Okay, just, we'll do.
All right.
Thanks.
Motion, Harrison, second to shoot, that we adjourn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're adjourned.